You remember the, you, were you here for August 23rd?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. One second.
Um, wait a minute.
Second.
Yes, he was. He was here. Bill was out.
Okay.
Yeah, Bill was out.
Made a motion.
I made a motion.
Uh, James did it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Minutes approved. Uh, 35 Cape Road. We gotta open the public hearing.
Continue.
Right. Well, continue, continue the public hearing for 35 Cape Road.
Win.
Hey, you have a letter attached here?
No, just, no, we don't need to keep, we're just...
Yeah, there it is.
Yeah, but we just make a motion to continue it, uh, when's the next meeting, Gil?
Hold on, you guys are really going too fast.
I know, well, that's right, we're gonna get this done.
Holy smokes!
No game on.
Wait a minute.
Just, just continue it to the next meeting with the, with the, once the board approve.
Wait a minute, you gotta vote, hold on.
Last Monday, 27.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for 35 Cape Road through the 22nd.
Seven, seven.
Seven, 27?
Yeah.
Okay, hold on.
27 at 7:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, slow down a little bit, please.
Make a motion, continue public hearing for 5 Morrison Drive through September 27th.
Can you guys please slow down a minute for me, please?
We know, you know what we're doing. So, it's just right with, right at your...
I know, I just wanted to make sure who voted and who seconds.
Yep, we'll tell ya, there's only two people here that are doing it.
Okay, wait a minute, James makes motions for 35 Cape, Barry, and all approved, right?
Yep.
Okay, so James is now doing, no, Barry did, Barry?
Barry made the motion on the second one, Jim, Jim seconded it.
You're doing it.
Okay, Gary, 5 Morrison. Okay, uh, okay, so they're both to September...
27th, next meeting.
Good thing I have, short here.
No. Know what you think about this?
Barry?
This is right here, right?
James seconded. Hey, those two were done. Oh, my gosh, who's the minutes?
Money Brook Estates.
Yep.
You got it.
Okay, so what we presented here to...
I'm waiting for the chairman.
Hold on one second.
You have all the paperwork, correct?
You're gonna put it right behind?
Barry, you got, you got eyes in the back of your head?
Not to the nose. A lot of blue on that plant.
Run by, we're gonna talk about this, this is, uh...
Can we bring that on?
The same applicant that is doing this one is the same applicant that did, is doing Pond Estates.
Yes.
Really, I mean, we can go through the motions, but we gotta get one resolved before we're gonna start another.
I agree.
Um, and I just gotta, I talked to Ann Mazat today. There, she's gonna double check with National Heritage to this week. They're gonna let you slope that and put a three split rail fence up there. If that's the case, I think that's probably a really good situation for you, right?
That's what you do. Put a split rail fence up at the top of the wall.
Of the, of the top, with, then slope it from the top of the wall down and then just do some plantings there.
Okay.
All right, but, so, but, I mean, we'll go through the mo, but, you know, before we go, before anything, I think any approvals are...
Oh, no, I understand that, sure.
We gotta get that under bed.
I would expect that.
Okay.
So, so tonight I'm submitting a proposal for a, uh, an open space flexible development called Muddy Brook Estates. It's a, approximately a 900-foot cul-de-sac off of the southerly side of Daniels Road. And it'll service eight lots. Now, the total area of the parcel is 30.74 acres. And the proposed open space is 21.73 or 70.6% of the property we remain as open space.
You wanna do it open space.
Yeah, okay, so this, so this is, you see in the darker green, including this, this is wetlands. This is, the darker green is open space and includes the wetlands. The wetlands make up 7.6 acres or 35% of the open space. You're allowed to have 50%. So, this lighter green, as you see, is the estimated area of development of the lots. The, uh, this, this color here is the remaining lots, it'll be undeveloped, but they're part of the development, part of the lots subdivision. So, you can see, uh...
The lighter green's gonna be the only thing that's gonna be disturbed?
Correct, correct. The lighter green is the only part of this that's gonna be disturbed.
Okay.
With the roadway. Everything else will remain open space. And the, the beauty of this is that it abuts already town of Mendon Open Space here. Good-sized parcel, goes all the way down to Providence Street.
Wasn't there something about a access to something that Bill, that Henry was talking about, that we, about to access that land?
He wanted to make sure he could get to it, so, I mean, like I say, we abut it, we're not cutting it off, there's no lot at the end of the cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac is...
So, okay, so you can, you'll own right to the cul-de-sac?
Yep, yep, you own the cul-de-sac.
They're gonna put some parking?
Town will own the cul-de-sac around there, so, yeah.
We'll fine tune that stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, uh, the other thing is that there's a, there's a Tennessee gas easement that runs right through the property right here. So, uh, that's, that will be in the open space when we're done with it.
Okay.
That's it, for the overview.
How many lots you planning?
Eight, eight lots on a dead end.
Was there, was there an issue up at the, at the entrance there about some land that wasn't sure was owned by who?
No, no, we resolved that, but the, um, there is a, there will be some issue with regards to grading, you know?
Coming in?
Coming in, yeah. I've asked for a waiver of the 100-foot leveling area to be able to make it work because otherwise that would be intrusing on the grades of the, of the gas easement for a significant amount of area.
Oh, okay.
Be no clear cutting, correct?
No, no, no clear cutting. Well, we'll stake the limit of clearing when the time comes.
Just do each, each lot as, as it goes with roadway?
Right, right, exactly.
What, you gotta fill a lot to get in there?
No, this, actually, this, this side will be, if the, the land slopes from, from...
It's really good.
So, the land slopes from east to west. This is the big hill coming down here towards the, towards the brook. So, this side of the, this side of the property will run off, will go into the road and be collected in the road and put it in detention basin. This side will be lower than the road, there'll be a swale built along the back of it that will also flow into the detention basin.
This is gonna be all the country drainage?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't...
Yeah. I just asked if there was gonna be country drainage, um, but we gotta do...
It's gonna be kind of a, I prefer curving with catch basins.
Catch basin, into a, into a detention basin.
Into detention basin, yes.
There'll be, be many more meetings where we get more, you know, into the fine tuning of everything, this is just a definitive.
Do you want them to develop?
No, this is the engineer. Say your name and address.
My name is Barbara Clark, and I'm gonna be in this property. Um, how large are the lots size on average?
It's gonna be minimum 40,000 square feet because you need septic and well, so they're, they're gonna be about, they're all about an acre, just about an acre.
About an acre?
About an acre.
Doing the open space subdivision, you, you gain a lot more town-owned land by making the lot sizes smaller, um, so it's a less intrusive to the town. And the town will generate, how many acres, Bob?
22, almost 22 acres of open space.
22 acres will be stuff that will never ever get built on.
So, you're developing a substantial subdivision of these lots?
My name is, my name is from Gary Arumman as well.
I've been, I've submitted after 40 of you people.
If you see the, if you see the dark green and the blue, none of that, that all becomes, uh...
I said, I'm sure you must have it on file.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the blue is the wetlands, but the, the is all uplands. It's not within the wetlands, um, and that, that'll all be conservation. In addition, um, the, so, medium green is the area that we're not proposing any clearing. So, the development is really just gonna be in that light green and...
That's always gonna stay that way, you know? You're not gonna cut through or whatever.
Um, it'll be, it'll be part of the conservation restriction that the Conservation Commission will, you know, it all depends on who it ends up, Metacomit or, there's a couple of different land trusts that will oversee it, but it's all conservation land. And there'll be restrictions on it that, it'll be mainly for walking paths, you know, um...
They create some parking spaces.
The open space concern, the concern I had before was when I was working with Bill and Henry, you know, gotta put the important housing down on the other end. And he was gonna go through there and put duration, put two big wells or whatever. I don't know where that stands, and my concern is that takes right through that end of the cul-de-sac.
Putting wells in would be one thing, but a well, but I don't think you'd ever see anything like that happening once it's done. No, there's gonna be no other houses there. You got so much wetland back there, it gotta be much...
Income housing's on the other side.
Yeah, the houses on the other side.
Huh.
Is that?
The low-income housing's on the other side, the well is defeated.
The well is, was, would be defeated, right, it would be just...
They never crossed the...
But, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My name is Richard Green, I live on Daniels Road also. I don't know if it was ever decided, is there enough frontage for a road to go in across Daniels, does that help with the frontage?
The road was built, was built.
So, yes.
There is enough.
Yes.
Yes, there is. Our surveyors looked at the properties and the, and then the, the proper access to Daniels was...
Would any states there where the road's gonna go in after you?
Uh, there probably isn't anything there now. Typically, that's not something you do until probably be submitted to the Conservation Commission. That's usually what about you would...
Am I to start on this one? Right, went to?
They're gonna have to go through a lot of, you know, they gotta go through conservation, they gotta go through, um...
The trust have to be taken care of before they go?
Well, I think we're, we're trying to do what, yeah.
Have the bylaws.
So, we don't have the same problem we're having on the other one.
Right.
When you said there's enough frontage, how much is there and what is required?
So, you need to be able to have a 50-foot right-of-way, um, which we have, but then in addition, there's a rounding requirement, and I don't know, I don't know what...
By, by, uh, by the subdivision rules and regulations.
Yes, I would say...
The road's gonna be 26.
130. Or, you know how, you know how the most of the road is wider? The, the property, the frontage shows the same thing, so if you probably have about 130 on Daniels, but then very quickly it'll come down to just 50.
The footage at the entrance is there. Um, but like I said, with the next few meetings that we go through, our town engineer will start, he's not here tonight, but he will take the plans and he will go through them and, with a fine-tooth comb and check everything out. And then they'll go back and forth with the applicant's engineer and make sure that everything's done the right way. It's not just us up here deciding who gets what, you know, everything will be done the way...
Plus, there's also a gas.
Correct, yeah, yep. And I mean, the gas, gas pipeline, as long as you stay away from it, you know, you can't be anywhere, I think, near 50, you can't go beyond 50 feet, go near, near it, I think, stay 50 feet away from it.
Have to cross it.
You gotta go over the cross.
So, you're gonna have to go through all the...
We'll have to, we'll have to go and do borings and determine the top of the pipe, like we did at Pond Street.
Yep.
Same thing.
That's part of the reason that construction will probably be later is because that, that line requires additional...
We did it at Pond Street.
Yeah.
Who owns this land now?
Michael Ferrucci.
Ferrucci owns all the property.
Ponzo owns it now, he bought it.
Ponzo, yeah, right.
Ponzo.
Yeah, Ponzo is the applicant. So, houses similar to what are probably on Pond Street, I would say like if you drove up off of George Street, that little, that's similar to what, they gave a bunch of land to the town, uh, the Norman Cox property, so, you have that area, you know, it's gonna be similar to that. Yeah, Jack?
Yeah, I just, I'm the new guy here, so, um, when you say right-of-way off of the main street, you mean they own it. It's not just a right-of-way.
Yeah, they own.
Um, second question, how long is the road?
900 feet.
Just under 900 feet.
Do we have a limit?
Five for lots, maximum of eight lots.
Maximum of eight lots.
Oh, I see, okay.
And in this, in this particular case, we actually went longer than we would have, um, but it was...
You could get...
So that we could get the cul-de-sac, so that you'd have access to the, um, to the town land, so...
And then the town land... I, I don't know, I don't know the bylaws yet, these guys will tell me. Um, is there a minimum of wetlands that could be in the open space?
35, 70, so, that max is 50, I mean, I'm...
Yeah, max is...
Yeah, so it's typical to what a lot of Commonwealth bylaws...
Just a lot of that, a lot of that.
Yeah, and so you can be flexible, it's actually a good thing, not a bad thing. Does it abut any other town land?
Yeah, but that, that's all town land right there, not with that big. That's why they put the cul-de-sac in there, so now the town actually has, has access from that cul-de-sac, it doesn't have to go on, you don't have to do it easily.
It's really a good, yeah, I've been through a lot of these subdivisions, these usually...
We wanna wait two meetings?
Yeah, I would say.
Because you want Jeff to give, you want...
I want Jeff to hear that time.
Yeah, all right. So, when is, when, not, not the next meeting, what is?
October 11th.
October 11th, you think that would be sufficient?
No, that's the holiday.
Oh, okay, so that ain't gonna so bad, what?
The next one is the, well, we go to the next one.
25th.
The 25th.
So, the 25th of October?
Yeah, supporters get your, will get the letter.
You'll all get notified, um, 'cause that's really when the hearing, that's when the hearing, public hearing starts. This is just them giving us a little information, you know, submitting the plans. Our engineer, the town engineer will go over it all and, you know, then they, like I said, they'll go back and forth. Any questions or anything?
We all separate this half.
At the end of the cul-de-sac, the earlier conversations said there definitely, there's some of the people that live in that, you know?
There'll be signage, there'll be, you know, there'll probably, I think, like on, on, on Daniels Road, you know, they have to put signs up, I mean, on, on Pond Street, there's signs up, town-owned land, you know, it's, it's... Just because it's town-owned land doesn't mean that you can go and put your woodpile or shed or fence, people that abut it, but, you know, it's, it'll be accessible for everybody in the town if they wanna go walk their dog or ride their bicycle or whatever.
Hunt.
Hmm, hunt. So, wanna make a motion to, uh, to set the public hearing?
Motion to set the...
Public hearing for...
Yeah, Muddy Brook Estates.
Make a motion to set the public hearing for Muddy Brook Estates for October 25th, 7:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Thanks, Liz.
See you then.
No, don't, don't tell them about the tree.
I wanna tell you.
Be like three or four, so when we're sitting here, we don't have to...
Oh, yes.
You know, just like for the board members.
For him to bring at the...
Yeah, when he comes to that meeting. But only not a shit ton of them.
Reason I had to come was to carry all this shit.
Glad you brought, hey, I'm glad you brought that up about finishing the, the other one first.
Yeah. I talked to Ann. I talked to Ann Mazat today about it. But she's gonna duck on it.
Um, if you could send a photo, if you, you know... Yeah, okay.
Are you?
No, you've got them all, you don't bother them. Yes, so no, don't need to make more.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, you do have a question earlier.
Just from now on...
You have a question earlier.
I was gonna answer that question, but it wasn't...
Yeah, no, what, what's the, I won't see, nothing to do?
Well, actually, no, two.
It's the public water supply for that affordable housing, but it's coming in from highway now.
Jeff wants the big one.
I don't think it affects us.
Right.
I think they're... Highway far side, do it right by highway now.
Yep.
Good, good, good thinking. Dave.
So, this is Ian Davis, he's the, Davies, he's the owner of Royal Fireside on Route 16. I'm working with Ian to do an addition to his shop. So, I have a drawing, but it's kinda small, you want me to put it on the thing, I have another plan here, you guys wanna look at, you want me to help and see how?
We can come up and take a look at it.
If anybody wanna, there, you know?
You're not changing it in use or anything.
So, this is in addition to the existing building. Existing building is here, and he has a trailer now that, um, is storage, because his septic tank is here, so he wants to connect it in this way.
The trailer and then connected?
It's gonna be a metal, it's gonna be matched to the facade of the new building. So, that's his plan on that.
Foundation, too?
Yep, foundation, slab will be, um, yeah. And then, uh, this is a 4,600 square foot addition, his existing building is only 25, uh, 2,500 square feet, so he's under any threshold for sprinkler, um, any trigger for that. Um, his existing lot, everything that he's proposing today is still in the business zone on, on the property as far as the construction goes. Uh, this is all an existing parking lot, it's gravel and a part of it is asphalt as well.
Yeah.
Um, the proposal is to have a curb cut on Route 16 to come up and to be able to park here, um, for, for his sales.
So, this is where the curb cut?
His original one is here, this one here is proposed. There is kind of a...
Yeah, there is.
We use it now all the time, yeah.
Here and...
I think you're gonna have to go to the state.
Yes, yeah, to legitimize it, yeah.
Yeah, but this, oh, this is the access that's...
It's a DOT permit, yeah.
I think we talked about this back, didn't, wasn't there a bunch of trees here years ago that...
Yeah, I think we cleaned it up.
We cleaned it up a lot, yeah.
Actually, the, the swale was, that was here, there was a bunch of, and the state came by and I said to the state, can you clean it up for me?
And they said it's gonna take two years, we're so far behind. So, he said, if you wanna do it yourself, please do, so I said, okay, and then, uh, we had it all cleaned up.
Right, I remember that now.
So, this is an existing depression, um, and a lot of the drain water was in it, but state has two pipes that are in there that drain, take off, they also take water off of Route 16 that goes in here and then across this. Yes, um, so, uh, he is proposing, um, to do asphalt driveway in, which is similar to the existing one right here, he has a parking area here, but this is for this...
Asphalt all the way or is it...
Um, I think right, right, just right to here, just right to here. There's a stone swale that's gonna feed right back into here for any drainage for the driveway.
The minute it's all water made?
No, it's, well, it's too small of an area, so, um, but this is the, uh, the configuration of the building is for his own use right now, but he did wanna set it up for down the road, maybe renting a piece of it if...
Like a contractor's yard?
Not a contractor's yard, no, can't do that. Well, that would be a special permit, but, um, I think just like a retail business.
Yeah, something like a rock store.
This is all cleared, all existing, there's a new septic system, the septic, original one is here, existing, that he's using. It's been re-perked with the Board of Health and there's a septic design being, um, submitted. And here's the new septic, it's gonna, here's the tank, it's gonna be, uh, for solids, and then it's gonna, a gravity into the pump chamber, and the pump chamber's gonna put it up together.
There's wetlands?
There is, it's all outside the 100-foot...
Oh, and it's all gathered here now, that's...
Oh, here.
Do you have to, does it fall under any, well, gutter drain?
Well, it's only, it's only 4,600 square feet, but, um, I would suggest that they put gutter infiltrators on each corner.
Yeah.
You know, just end of the pre-impulse.
Yeah.
'Cause I mean, you, this is all gonna run pitch into the, into here.
Right.
If, that's not gonna get cleaned?
No, no, this, no, this is, this is, um, this is a, uh, gravel swale. It'll be a riprap gravel swale to take any kind of solids out of it before it even gets in here.
Okay.
She could probably provide, um, Margaret could probably provide some detail on, on that, you know, we could submit that. It's a relatively small addition, we're coming to you just to get your input as far as, you know, get you familiar, I'm sure everyone's familiar with the site, everybody knows where it is, but if there's anything that you wanna see in addition...
As long as every, as long as you're not coming into any, falling into any, you know, where you have to do a recharge or anything.
No, everything's, it's staying gravel. All the existing area back...
This is all gravel anyway, here, right?
He's not proposing to pave it all to create a stormwater, he'd have to build a total basin, and this would have to be engineered, he doesn't wanna build that route. That's why he kept it small, so, he wanted to keep it under the threshold.
Losing some of your storage in the parking lot.
Yeah, yeah, we brought a lot in this year only because they're telling me there was a shortage, so we don't have that bay in there.
Why, everything, everything.
Good thing you don't have toilet paper sales.
Yeah.
Hi, wouldn't you need any, uh...
No permits, yeah, right?
Yeah, this is, um, we wanted to come here before we went to the, uh, C joint to get a building permit. Now, if, if you think, um, if you wanna get, us to get a calculation on the roof size, we can, and have her size for infiltrators to...
Well, I mean, just, I would just do it just for the, just to have it.
Okay.
And that way there, if there is any issue, then you gotta talk.
Okay.
I mean, to do it now is gonna be probably better off.
No, she can, she can modify the plan, we can, we can put one there.
Yeah, it might be a good thing to have them anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, I think sometimes it's just, where you go.
Yeah, instead of dumping it on the ground.
Yeah.
It's all gonna come this way anyway, so...
Just make a mess.
I noticed it wasn't on that before the meeting, I mentioned it to them.
They don't need to like clean it?
No.
No.
No, it's just, we just, they would just be...
It's a courtesy.
Yeah, that's, that's what happens.
What a good guy.
All right, good, have a good night.
All right?
That's good.
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
Good luck.
You too.
Yeah.
You gonna keep this one or?
There's nine, but she's requesting, uh, like, for the board to vote for a quorum of five people.
I think that's gonna be okay?
I don't, that's what Ellen's asking for.
I know there's nine people, but you, hopefully, the top five show up every day.
There's...
What is this?
For the master plan.
Uh, master plan committee.
They're having a hard time getting a quorum.
That's what I mean, so why don't you put it at three?
I'm kidding.
Well, Ellen asked...
You know what, the more, the more members you have, the worse, the worse...
We're gonna be in a pickle is what...
Yeah, no, if you have three people for a quorum, then at least you can, you're not wasting everybody, you're not wasting the three people's time to show up.
I, I know, that's why she figured five would be good.
Well, five is...
So, whatever you wanna do, is five normal?
Five is, five is the majority.
There's three of us here tonight.
Yeah. And five members.
Okay, so you can do what you want now.
So, there's nine members?
Nine members, so legit would be five.
Well, two more were appointed, Karen and...
Five of the members of the planning board?
I didn't bring...
No, we have five.
Bill's on it, but I, I think that you should put it at three, so if you come...
Okay, then make your motion.
You're involved in that, right?
Yeah, I won't be a member though.
No, but you'll be...
I'm hanging out. I'm hanging out.
But Bill says to put it on here, so you guys need to vote.
You're gonna see me hanging out.
Make a motion to set the quorum for the master plan committee at three.
All in favor?
Okay, Barry seconds.
And we gotta sign the riders for so.
Yeah.
I don't either. Who, who appointed the committee?
I think Bill.
We did.
Volunteers.
They just took anybody and everybody because nobody shows up.
Is anybody sworn in? They're, they're, we approve them.
We appoint them.
Yeah, that's it, we appoint them.
It's like, I mean, you know what, we need to put it, you know what, let's set it at, Gail, let's set it at five and see how it works out, just so we don't get ourselves.
I just don't know.
Because, well, like I said, she's.
Yeah, what's your idea about that?
She's asking for five.
Going out for five, let's do it.
Is that one in the club?
So let's make another motion to, to reset the master plan committee quorum at five people.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so here, this is the. Okay, this, I don't think this has ever been done, but there's like six that need to be signed. I don't know, Fred Laffham. Well, what it is, is they, you got a write-up from Jeff Walsh on the different sections. So there's six sections there, ask for money back, you know, to draw.
Oh, it says bond release.
The bond.
Oh, I see that when you're done.
Jeff, Jeff approved it?
Jeff's the one that said.
They're just using the bond.
Yeah, it's in, it's in Jeff's.
As long as Jeff okayed it.
So these are different subdivisions.
No, this is one subdivision.
Oh, it's just one?
It's such a big subdivision that they have, you know, so many, they have like, there's like, wow, seventies.
Holy crap.
A bunch of houses in Mendon, some in Oxford, some in Northbridge.
So he's done his.
How does correspond to Jeff's release?
Yes, yes.
And he tells you what's remaining.
They do, I checked it.
He wrote these up?
No, so whoever, their bank, their bond place did.
Doesn't even have a spot for us to sign.
That's it, right?
But shouldn't this be Bill that signs these?
It would be accepted by.
Yeah, but it should be Bill that signs these. He's the, he's the chairman. Shouldn't be us.
What's the question?
Well, we, we, we are.
Well, maybe Damon, you can sign them because Bill's.
The vice chair can sign it.
Yeah.
I'm not worried about the signing thing, as long as Jeff was okay with everything.
Well, that's, that's, you've got, you've got the letter, you've got it here. It was, I saw it.
Well, you had it in your hand right there. He's reading it.
No, I have another one.
What did Jeff today?
Yeah. No, number seven, don't worry about, because that was the same, they didn't ask for a reduction in it. On, I, I checked each one to make sure.
I mean, that's how every town does it. You have your peer engineer or your town engineer.
They've never sent this one before.
Never seen these.
Oh, I haven't seen that.
Yeah.
That's probably the bank.
It is the bank.
Yeah, and I think it's an insurance.
Well, it's, wherever they have the bond.
I've saw, we've had boards sign those before. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so he's locking everything down from a hundred and six thousand to eighty.
Yeah.
Twenty-three to ninety-five.
Three of them to forty-three.
Yeah, so.
We'll get number seven, number seven is, is they're not asking for a reduction.
So you, you might wanna vote to accept this minus section seven.
Yeah, we can, it'd be right here, Jimmy, I guess we could do, do this.
Willowbrook is good up here.
Hold on.
Willowbrook, right up the street. Really the only place in Mendon. Why do, why do they have to vote on this?
Well, they gotta vote to reduce the bond.
Board voting immediately.
And authorize him to sign it.
We're all on the same page here.
Saying, hand seven.
What were you saying, why not seven?
Because on here it says hand seven.
Because I called Fred on it, I said, there's no seven things here.
That's so new.
There's only six. No, it's, they didn't, they're not asking for a reduction on section seven.
Oh, okay.
Just the first six.
We'll just do, we'll just do the first six. We're only signing the.
You've only got six.
Yeah, that's all we got.
So you're voting to reduce the bond as written, except for section seven. Authorize the vice chairman to sign.
Okay. This motion to.
Reduce the bond for whatever it is.
Reduce bond as.
As presented.
Except for section seven and authorize the vice chair to sign. And the banks or the insurance companies, you know, this guy wants to get, quit paying interest on this, is what he wants.
Can't blame him, he's been at this a long time.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm gonna have to go up there.
It's, it's really quite.
Bill said he was gonna give me a tour.
He's done a great job. It was a tough, tough area.
Yeah, a lot of legs, a lot of.
James, are you making that motion, James?
I made the motion.
Okay, and Barry seconds.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm only signing one, but not gonna, you want me to sign a copy two?
Uh, no, because you know why? I'm gonna make copies of it and just put it in the file.
The bank will get.
Yeah, so just sign the first one, the top one, because those are the ones I'm giving back to.
Well, instead of wasting paper, you just want me to sign this, you can throw this in the, in the.
Why not?
Well, if you wanna sign it, go ahead.
Well, if that's what you're gonna do, then there's no sense of wasting paper.
Oh, thank you, Damon.
We waste enough paper, I, I.
I'll take one home with me, it'll be a signature.
There you go.
What was the motion?
All in favor?
Of course, Barry. Okay, wait a minute, let me just make sure there was nothing else.